Good evening Arlington. This is the Select Board meeting for Monday, December 10th, 2018 in the Select Board chambers. We're a few minutes past 7:15. We're going to start this meeting with news that unfortunately just about everybody does or is aware of, the untimely passing of our colleague and good friend Kevin Francis Greeley. To say shock is an understatement. What I'm first going to do is our chairman, Dan Dunn, unfortunately couldn't be here tonight. Had conversation with him about the agenda as well as opening the meeting up with any personal remarks that my colleagues or anyone else would like to make. I do have this statement from the chairman, Dan Dunn, and he says as follows. Dear colleagues, I regret that I'm not there to share my thoughts about Kevin in person. Kevin loved Arlington, all of it, the old, the new, and everything in between. His love wasn't a passive quiet love, it was an exuberant love, full of energy and action and ideas. His love and all that came with it helped us make Arlington what it is today. I miss him dearly. Dan Dunn. I would now like to ask Mrs. Kropelker, our board administrator.
This is difficult. As you know, that we loved Kevin dearly and he loved Arlington. Besides his family, he loved the town of Arlington, would do anything for us, and not only is he missed by his colleagues, but his select girls.
Thank you. Town manager, Mr. Chapdellane.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Like many have said, Kevin's welcoming presence on this board from the first day I ever worked here was something that I'll always remember. And more recently, I'll share a story. Just several weeks ago, the Rotary Club did their Flags for Heroes memorial or event in front of the high school, and this year commemorated the whole event in honor of John Billifer, who passed earlier this year. And the Rotary Club asked me to say a few words about John Billifer. So I did that. And as he always does, Kevin paid close attention to how I spoke and came up to me after and said, Adam, I think that's one of the best speeches you've ever given. You need to still keep your hands from moving around too much and keep your feet in one place, but that's one of the best you ever gave. And it was just, you know, it was one of the last conversations I ever had with Kevin, and it was emblematic of how he was always interested in helping people, you know, get better, feel better, and be the best that they can be, and that's something I'll always hold dear to my heart as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Town council, Attorney Hine.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A call from Kevin was one of the high points of my day when he called. Sometimes he was calling with a clear purpose and an idea that he wanted to see through fruition for Arlington. Sometimes he was calling because he was curious about something and he wanted to know what the state of the law was. Sometimes he was calling because he wanted to show his appreciation for folks, and I know that I was not alone in this, to thank town staff, to support them, to compliment somebody on a particularly good piece of work. And then sometimes Kevin was calling because the piece of work was Kevin. And he was just calling to harass me about the Yankees, a particularly bad signing, the Eagles, a victory for the Patriots. And in all those times, the most serious calls, the most lighthearted ones, I always looked forward to his sign-off, which always had that little bit of a laugh that we all remember so well, and I am just going to miss that laugh and the sound of his voice.
Thank you, Doug. Mr. Hurd.
I should warn everyone ahead of time, I'm a bit of a crier, so I might not get through this. Kevin was a rare example of an elected official that truly served without any personal agenda. He served for 30 years as the longest-serving member of this board for the sole reason that he had a passion for the town and he had a passion for the residents of this town. When Kevin met somebody on the street, he only asked two things of them: How are you? And what can I do for you? I think one of the things that Kevin did best, and probably better than any member that this board has seen and probably better than any member that we'll ever see, was his ability to bridge the gap between Arlington's history and Arlington's future. A good example of this was last, in the town meeting this year, in the 2018 annual town meeting in the special portion, where he came up and he gave an impassioned speech in support of changing the name of the board which he had served on for nearly 30 years. Because he knew that it was important for, to promote the inclusivity of this board in bringing all members of the town to this board. But he also gave us a long history on the word "select," which was so emblematic of Kevin, to be a stickler for history, and we all got to learn something, and you could tell how much that portion of this town's history and this town's board meant to him. He was a great friend of mine, he was a great supporter, and he was a great mentor to me. I'm not sure I'd be here without his help. I'll forever miss his smile, his laugh, and his kind words. But I'm grateful for the times that we had and the knowledge he passed on to me. So Kevin recently showed us what a poet he was as he came up with a haiku on the spot in a meeting. I'm not a poet, and I don't purport to be, so I'm going to use the words of famed American poet James W. Comerally. "I cannot say, and I will not say, that he is dead, he is just away. With a cheery smile in the wave of the hand, he has wandered into an unknown land, and left us dreaming how very fair it needs must be since he lingers there. And you, oh you, who the wildest yearn for an old-time step and the glad return, think of him faring on as dear, in the love of there as the love of here. Think of him still as the same, I say. He is not dead, he is just away."
Thank you, Joe. Mr. Kira.
Thank you. It's difficult to follow. This hurts, and it hurts particularly this time of year. I think anyone who knew Kevin knows how much he loved Christmas and the holiday season. And every year that I knew him, he organized one or more sing-alongs, holiday sing-alongs. Oftentimes, they were at our senior citizens' housing complexes to entertain our seniors. And in the last few years, he loved organizing these performances down in the town hall auditorium, and he did it as a partnership with the Magical Singers and with the jazz band. It always came to a kind of a climax when he would step to the podium and he would sing "Fly Me to the Moon" along with the Arlington High School jazz band. And that hurts because some of those performances, when my kids were really little, I'll say that Selectones are a seasoned group, but he always welcomed the kids. And his nephew was usually there, and he always welcomed my girls, and sometimes they'd have a few friends there, and he'd ask them what song did they want to sing, and he made them feel like a million bucks, made them feel like a real star. John hit on a theme that resonates with me, too, is that Kevin was a complicated guy. I mean, he really did bridge the old and the traditional in Arlington with kind of the new. I mean, we know he was devoted to his church, he celebrated the history, he organized our celebration of our 100 years of this building. It was a big deal to him, and it was really important to him. He used to always sign off the Selectones performances. He would say, "As long as our troops are overseas, we like to sign off with God bless America," which some might find kind of quaint or anachronistic, but it was Kevin, and it came straight from the heart. As others have said, he really was committed to recognizing the contributions of others. The last piece of business, the last piece of new business when he was sitting in this chair, he was talking about the work that's, that has been, our committee that we put together has been putting into the Arlington Select Board awards to recognize Arlingtonians who've made contributions, and he made sure that every five years at least that we were able to do that, to recognize the contributions of others to this town. And as traditional as Kevin was in many ways, he also was right there with us. He was a dogged defender of the schools. He was right there with us in extending protections based on gender expression, identity, and celebrating Pride Week, and going over to Nago Kakio, celebrating our sister-city relationship with Japan. And it's interesting, John honed in on that last speech that Kevin gave to town meeting. I actually, I went online tonight to look at it again and transcribe part of it, and I'd encourage anyone who can, if you go to the ACMI website, it's the April 25th, 2018 speech, it's around 2 hours and 6 minutes. And so I wanted to read just a little piece of it. Kevin approached the mic and he said, "Thank you, Mr. Moderator Kevin Greeley, Precinct 11. I am a white, 67-year-old man who for 30 years has been called a 'select' man, who was raised by a father who was 21 years a select man, and I was originally against this article. I've seen the error of my ways, especially because of the women that I have served with on the Board of Selectmen." And as John said, he then proceeded, as he so often did, to give us a history lesson about the origins of this board, and he finished his remarks by saying, "I don't think if we take the word 'Board of Selectmen' and change it to 'Select Board' does any less in terms of describing what we do. How we behave describes what we do, and how we have behaved all these years describes what we do. For me, in the end, I am a select man, and I'd be proud to be a member of a Select Board." And I'll just say, I am proud to have served as a member of the Select Board with Kevin for so many years. Thank you, Madam Chair.
First, what I want to do on behalf of the Select Board is thank the board administrator, Mrs. Kropelker, in her office for a setting up what I think is something that almost justifies Kevin not sitting there, and believe me, I missed that, as well as all the events with Kevin's wake in the town hall and ceremonies over at St. Agnes. And I would like to say to the town manager, Mr. Chapdellane, starting with you and your office, that was quite an austere and appropriate ceremony, but had so many moving parts. So I want to thank Mr. Chapdellane and everybody, all the way down to Greg. Please pass on this board's thanks to Chief Ryan and all the other ancillary staff that came out, and if I start naming them, I'm going to miss, but, you know, Middlesex County Sheriff's Office. It was so appreciated, and I kept saying over and over again, Kevin would love to be here. He would love this because he was into loving Arlington, you know, town hall, sometimes the auditorium was his heartbeat of Arlington in there. And considering this is something none of us had really gone down this road before, such a tragedy, and it is, definitely did service to Kevin Francis Greeley and his family, and I don't know how we could thank all the employees from the Select Board and Town Manager's office on down, so please relay that. And to Annie, Katie, and Sean, God bless you, we love you. As the pastor, the father, sorry, Baptist, at St. Agnes said, I want to do the same thing, I want to thank Kevin's family, because we all know this, but especially Kevin as the longest-serving Selectman for, you know, giving us, sacrificing their time, not only to the Select Board but to the town of Arlington. And just myself on a personal note, I was elected in 1999. Kevin was the first, and for a long, long time, the only Selectman that would talk to me at the time, and he was big on history and tradition and protocol and making sure I knew my way around. And then over the years, the friendship evolved. Very little-known story, I had a family medical severe emergency, short tenure on the board with no fanfare or anything. Kevin came in, put everything else aside, and really took care of my family in very dire circumstances, and really just saved my family from some very serious offsets of medical issues that we had to deal with. And over the years, you know, it was fun teasing him, he's the senior member of the board, you know, kicking his shoe when he started to say, you know, he'd lean over and say, "Did I mess up?" But it's a, well, and I'm going to miss that, so. But I know we'll hear Kevin and feel Kevin as we continue on in our service, so I'd say to Kevin and his Kevinisms, my friends, Kevin to the millions watching out there who are sadly tingling with anticipation. I'm sorry, we don't have any samples. God bless you, Kevin, we love you. Okay. Oh, that came close. Okay, agenda item two. We have a discussion on the dockless bike share update on Lime Bike. Mr. Chapdellane, should I start with you?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll simply introduce our senior transportation planner, Dan Amstutz. He's been working closely with Lime Bike and working on their, with their software. We've gained a lot of data, so he's going to quickly walk through his memo and then answer any questions the board might have.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Daniel Amstutz, Senior Transportation Planner with the Department of Planning and Community Development. You have a memo and also a few maps that tells some of the story about the Lime Bike program, the dockless bike share program over the last five to six months. And I'll just go over some brief highlights about it. So as you may know, it started at the end of June with about 150 bikes from the bike share vendor Lime. Spin was going to be part of it, but they decided to forego their participation with it, and so we've been working directly with Lime. And so there've been almost 18,500 trips of, or rides of the Lime Bikes over the past six months, and about 15,000 of those have been on manual bicycles and then 3,500 on the Lime E, the electric assist bicycles. And we've averaged about 3,500 trips per month, with the highest month in September of almost 5,000 rides, which is really impressive. But over the last month, as you can imagine, it's dipped quite a bit back to 2,000 rides occurring last month. The e-bikes were introduced in September, and they've proved to be pretty popular. They've actually proved about a third of the trips that are taking place over the period when it started have been on the e-bikes. And I've ridden them as well. I think they're actually really, really helpful because the manual bikes are kind of heavy and sometimes hard to get around. But, so Lime has about 120 manual bicycles and 30 e-bikes that they've been operating or that have been coming into town, and they can go up to 300 at this point, but they haven't quite rolled out over the entire regional system. And so they think they'll probably expand that out when it comes back to spring to potentially go up to 300 manual bicycles and e-bikes. I provided a map showing some of the density of where the start trips are and the end trips are, and a lot of them are occurring, people are taking them to A.L.I.F. station around the bikeway, Mass Ave, along Broadway, and the people are bringing them also out into the neighborhoods where you can see some of the end trips. It's a hotspot analysis, so showing where some of the hotspot areas are. But when they start them, the Lime will bring them back to a location like in Arlington Center or other sort of locations where they stage them. We also, another piece of this was a routing map. We don't have sort of direct access to the routing information of where people are actually riding the bicycles, but we have a Google map that we can zoom in on and see where the highest density areas, where people are driving them. And so there's significant activity not, not only on the Minuteman Bikeway and Mass Ave, but also Broadway, Summer Street, Warren Street, Mystic Street, Lake Street, and Pleasant Street, which is interesting. A couple of pieces from the rules and order for the pilot bike share program. Haven't really had too many concerns about safety, no crashes that I'm aware of. There's been some concerns about where the bikes are being staged and where they're being left, but we've talked to them about it, and they've committed to fixing that. Again, the Lime Bikes are proving to be very popular, even though they're about 20% of the overall vehicle, vehicle modes, they're making up a third of all trips, so that's interesting, people are really taking to them. And then in economic development and tourism, they're leaving, again, people are ending in the business districts and also near some of the cultural assets, but we can't exactly tie that to dollars being spent there. But that's, from the data that we have, we can, we can show that. Just very briefly, this, so that was for the Arlington system itself, and then there's also the regional system itself, which includes 15 municipalities. There've been over 250,000 trips on the entire system. There's been, within the entire system, 2,000 bikes out there and traveled over 2,000, 200,000 miles. For the Lime Bike, for the winter plan, for what they're going to be doing, is they're going to be reducing, or I think they're already reducing their fleet about 50%, 40 to 50%, so from about 150 bikes that we have in town, they're going to reduce that to 75. And when there is a snow event, especially if it's a large snow event, they're going to try and take all those bicycles out of circulation and put them into a local garage or area where they can store them for the winter storm and then bring them back once there is, once that's been mostly cleared. There are a few municipalities that have opted to have them take them out entirely. We haven't done that. We had, we didn't have too much issue with the winter storm that we had already in November, but we can continue to monitor that and see if that's an issue. The bicycles are still being used. And then once they get to the spring relaunch, they hope to get 4,000 bicycles to the entire Just a few more, there's a meeting with MAPC next week about the contract extension. At the moment, I don't see any, I don't see any reason why MAPC might not extend that. I think most of the towns have had very good experiences with Lime, not too many issues with that, but that is on May 3rd, and then our bike share license would expire on July 1st. And so there'll be a discussion about the MAPC license and if that has any effect on our license or their contract, and if it has any effect on our license. And then, so finally, just some conclusions. I'd say it's been very successful. It's really, I think, helping to close some of that first mile, last mile gap, especially to A.L.I.F. station, and that we can see that the bicycle facilities on Mass Ave and the Minuteman Bikeway are definitely being well-used, but there may be an unmet need for other bike facilities on other streets like Mystic Street or Summer Street where we can see that there's considerable activity taking place there as well. And so, again, we look forward to working with the board and with the Bike Share Working Group to continue to explore ways to create the infrastructure needed to encourage bicycling as a safe, efficient transit mode. Are there any questions?
Mr. Hurd.
Two questions.
Sure.
I looked through the data. Is there any way to look specifically at data of rides that are originating in other towns, cities and towns that are within the region that are ending in our business districts?
So MAPC...
I don't know if it's too specific to pull it up, but one of the reasons I supported this was to try to join this region and try to get people from, say, Belmont, say, a ride to Arlington Center because they're part of the Lime Bike region and shop there.
So the data that we can see, they've kind of split up, each municipality gets access to a data dashboard that shows their municipality's information, and it's a little hard to say how they're, they may be trips that are attributed to Arlington, I believe, are starting in Arlington, but there's sort of a calculus that's involved with figuring that out. MAPC is going to get access to the big regional data set that they have, and so they will be able to look more closely at that. They're also, MAPC is also planning to do a survey to, I think, collect more demographic information that Lime doesn't typically collect with their, with their app when somebody signs up to take a Lime Bike, but that's information that I think we can try to tease out from MAPC once they get, they start analyzing that data feed.
Yeah. Then, second question, which is for me, the million-dollar question. In discussions with Lime, have they started talking about whether they want to introduce scooters into the mix for us? Not to say I support, but is that, is that starting to come to the table?
There was, there was a, our regional, the regional system or, you know, MAPC is kind of coordinating with all the communities, and there was a kind of an email chain that went around about whether communities would be interested. And I think the majority of the communities were not interested in scooters. I personally, I'd say, maybe open to it within reason, but I think the majority are not interested in that.
It would help me get up the hill. The e-assists are good, but...
To add to that, Lime is certainly interested in rolling that out, as well as other vendors. It is ultimately going to require a change in state law to make it lawful to operate one of those scooters anywhere in the Commonwealth. So if that change happens, which I know there's many groups lobbying for that to occur, I would say, I think we should look at it and at least have a policy discussion about it.
So is blue bike elite, were they, people illegally operating the scooters when they put them in Cambridge?
A bird, yes.
Oh, yeah.
You said the S-word. Scooter. Did you have...
Yeah.
Mr. Kira.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you very much for the presentation. It's great to finally meet you and welcome you after going back and forth on email. I love the Lime Bikes. I, my family, have used them a number of, number of times. I'm glad that there's a recognition that there may be some of our streets that require some more facilities for the bikes, because I think there are some selected areas where that, that is a real issue, the way folks are disposing of the bikes when they're, when they're done with their trips. And I would be interested in seeing us have a conversation with Lime about whether or not there isn't a technology slash pricing approach to try to address some of that, because I know that Lime is using selective pricing for bikes that have not been moved in a number of days from their location. They're like, I forget what they call them, bonus bikes or something, it shows up differently. But I wonder if there might be a way for them to use that mechanism to try to encourage people to responsibly, you know, place the bike in a, give it, give an incentive. Granted, it doesn't take away the benefit of being able to drop the bike wherever you want, but if there's an incentive to put it at a designated location, I'd love to see us have that conversation with Lime. And the other question I have is also about data. Do we have access to data that would actually demonstrate whether rebalancing is happening as often as we had expected?
I would need to ask them about that. My, so as I mentioned, one of the maps shows the end points, and you may, or shows sort of a blob showing where the end points are ending up, but the starting points typically, if somebody doesn't pick up, doesn't use a bike that ends up in a neighborhood and it stays there for a few days, my understanding is that they will come and they will pick it up and move it back to one of the staging areas. And, I'm sorry, can you say your question one more time?
I was just wondering if you had access to data that shows you how often they're being rebalanced.
Okay. I can give you personal, I've been, I was, when this first started, advocating to get some Lime Bikes up in my area. We finally got one, and I had one parked in front of my house, and I used it for a couple of days, but they came, they did eventually come and take it, so. So they were at least at that point.
Yeah, so my understanding is that there's a metric that they, or there's a timeframe for picking them up at one point, but also their, one metric that they look at very closely is the rides per bike per day. So they want to have that number to be at least one or greater, ideally greater than one, so that their bikes are being used as often as possible. So if it's in a location that really isn't seeing a lot of use, they will try to rebalance it in a place where they think it's going to get more usage. I mean, as you get, so as we're getting into, you know, November, they're getting sort of less than one ride per bike, so, you know, if 60 rides in a day, that's not all of the bikes that we have within the town limits. But I would have to ask them about what sort of policy they have. I think they, they may have shifted it depending on what... have. I think they, they may have shifted it depending on what they're seeing out there. And that's one of the things that they're doing, kind of responding to the situation when it comes to rebalancing the bikes or staging them in places. They see if that's works, and then they may move it to another location that they think is working better.
But I think we had a metric in the agreement.
Yeah, and I, I want to say-
24 or 48 hours?
And if Mr. Dunn were here, he'd do far better justice to this than I can. But if someone can keep track of these data points, because the technology is there, all these can be tracked, whether it's rebalancing, when it occurs, percentage, as well as how many bicycle trips originate in Arlington, stay in Arlington, as well as how many originate outside of Arlington and come to Arlington. I know all that data is available. I can't tell you how. So, you know, maybe, maybe for something-
It exists, yeah.
-in the future. And if I missed anything else, because that's one of the things that the chairman, every meeting we're at, you know, he would say, oh, I just got on, you know, on the Lime Bike, and he would tell all this information, but he's far more versed on it. But Mr. Kiro, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure that's it.
Those are all my comments. Thank you very much for the presentation.
I have just two comment, two questions, but did you want to speak, sir? Because you may ask one of my questions. Sure, if you can come to them, if you could just, sure, step aside, just name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sure. I'm Steve Moore. I live at 64 Piedmont Street. Just a quick question for you, sir. Who has liability for winter weather-related accidents with Lime Bikes in Arlington? I'm thinking mostly, mostly ice, ice on sidewalks, you know, the, the ramps on and off sidewalks, all those things, because winter offers some special challenges. It just occurred to me, as I was listening to the presentation, thank you very much, it was very good, was, who has liability for that? Does the town, is the town's liability increased or incurred related to these bikes in the winter and town property? And maybe that's a question for-
Mr. Amstead or Mr. Attorney Heim?
So I guess what I would say is, just by having the bikes period, we do have some increased liability in the sense that we are responsible for public and private ways. There is a cap on damages that people can recover for an accident on a public and private way. When it comes to snow and ice, it is dependent on a lot of factors. If there's some fault with the condition of the bike, for example, my office would look to see if the bike is not maintained well, if it's, you know, been sitting in a snowbank or something like that, we might have an argument that the bike itself is part of the problem. But in terms of just the general condition, if we haven't sufficiently salted the roads, not that DPW would ever allow that to happen, or there's some other condition, yeah, we're potentially liable for those conditions in terms of just the maintenance of the sidewalks and the roads themselves. People shouldn't be riding their bikes on the sidewalks. So that's not really as much of a concern, but we are charged with the maintenance of our roadways.
If I can, sorry, if I can just add to that, too, just to compound what you said, is it's no different than anyone riding their own bikes. It's not because we're licensing them. It's just, anyone riding a private bicycle, we would have the same liability to them if the roads weren't sufficiently salted.
I, I understand. I'm just, I'm just bringing it up in case, I think it probably would be smart to track it, because winter offers additional challenge, I think, to, to summer in terms of road condition, and how fast the DPW gets to this sidewalk or this on-ramp or this intersection traffic light setup, it could be complicated, that's all. I just, it just occurred to me, I just wanted to raise that point.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
So, thank you, I appreciate that.
I'll just say that when it does come to winter storm events, my understanding is that they will, as I said, they will pick them up, all of the bikes, and bring them to a local garage or sort of safe haven to try and, try and avoid taking them back to the main garage or the main storage facility they have in Malden, I believe. But they will, my, their plan is to not bring the bikes back until it's been sufficiently plowed, and, and things are looking much safer than, you know, in the middle or right after the snow event occurs. So I think they will kind of, they will look at that and see what makes sense.
Yeah, and then that's why I'm stressing for that data point information, because there's a policy of what they say they can or cannot do. And we just want to see if the data is available. What the practice is, is that actually happening? You know, maybe it's happening sooner, later, or not. And then, my two quick questions, I'm not sure if it would be Town Council or Mr. Chapdeline. I understand that with Lime Bike, it has to be renewed in May of 2019, I think that's the end date. And my question is, are we fixed with Lime Bike? I know originally, there was, I don't want to say Blue Bike, but there was Lime Bike and a Blue Bike, and that company either declined or MAPC didn't offer them. If before, my question is, are we locked in with Lime Bike and we're only negotiating with them for a new contract renewal in May of 19? Or if another vendor comes in that the MAPC also approves, what would happen in that case point? Do we say to Lime Bike, instead of 4,000, you're going to get 2,000 bikes, because we have to give two to Blue Bike, or Yellow Bike? Do you understand the question?
So, just to refresh everybody's recollection, there was a competitive procurement run through the MAPC. They did the RFP, not the town. And the town essentially voted to sign on to that RFP, and then the contract is actually with the MAPC. What we ultimately elected to do was have a license. Their license, I believe, expires at the end of June. So their license will expire with us regardless of whether the MAPC renews their contract. And the MAPC only did a competitive procurement to select two vendors, Spin and Lime. They'd have to put out some kind of further competitive procurement process to have another vendor. So we are, I guess, stuck with Lime is, is one way to put it, in the sense that we'd have to do our own competitive procurement or have the MAPC do one in order to have some kind of contractual relationship. But I just, again, stress that we basically are giving them a license, and we have an MOU with the MAPC. We can change the terms of our license to reduce the number of bicycles. One of the things that the board, I think, if I recall correctly last time, would want to see is a higher license fee. This time, we waive that fee in recognition of the tremendous startup costs that Lime was facing. So there will be some things for us to look at internally regardless of what the MAPC does. And then, if we want to do our own procurement, we certainly could, but I think the advantage of the MAPC process is the regionalization of it.
So, sounds like we have the flexibility. And then, just my sort of data point question would be, if we could get from the information, the top three or five concerns, complaints, issues, and how they were resolved. You know, placement of bike, I'm, I'm, whatever's easiest. They may say there's two, three, or four most commonly asked questions, and here's how we're dealing with it, because I think it would help the select board and others in terms of process, especially with the snow coming. So with that, I will take a, anybody else? A motion to receive by Mr. Kiro, seconded by-
Second.
-Mr. Hurd, and a motion by Mr. Kiro, seconded by Mr. Hurd, to move receipt. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Unanimous vote. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Can I just ask, is anyone here for the consent agenda, items three through 10? If not, I'm going to, with my colleagues' approval, I'm going to skip to a 7:30 public hearing, which we certainly are past 7:30. Agenda item 11, a vote for the MWRA debt shift, discussion on property tax classification tax rate. I see Mr. Tierney here. Mr. Chapdeline, would you sort of like to set the order?
I think similarly, I'll, I'll ask, I don't know if Paul or if Kevin Feeley from the Board of Assessors are going to take the lead, but we have the package before the board, as we have had in prior years, to set this year's tax rate. And there's also some additional information that's been put together based on questions raised by a resident of whether or not the board should consider either a residential exemption or a shift towards the commercial tax rate. And I think Paul and Kevin will talk about both of those matters.
So Mr. Feeley, then Mr. Tierney, and I believe Mr. Jameson? Okay, so if I can do it in that order, is that okay? Thank you.
I think after that discussion, we're having the classification hearing that we have, have to hold annually. And as you know, it's just to determine whether the town wants to have different set class rates depending on the use of the property. We have a short bench today. Mr. Robert Greeley has a prior medical commitment, and Mary O'Connor had a family medical emergency. So we're, but Paul has done all the work, and he'll do the explanation, too. By the way, I agree 100% with your comments on my namesake, Kevin Greeley.
Thank you, Mr. Feeley.
Thank you, Kevin. Before I start, I'd like to thank the Board of Assessors for the support throughout the year, Chairman Bob Greeley, Kevin Feeley, and Stanley O'Connor. And also, I'd like to acknowledge my terrific staff, Mary McMakin, Ellen Kelly, and Dana Mann, who's with us tonight.
Thank you, thank you very much.
So if we get started, to calculate, we are on page two here. Calculate the 2019 levy limit. We start with the 2018 levy limit, add the 2.5% plus new growth, will give us a 2019 levy limit of $113,696,347. From there, we add the school debt exclusion, water and sewer debt, and the maximum that we need to raise is $124,62,62,061. So now we're going to calculate, calculate 2019 tax rate. So we need to raise $124,019,976, divide that by total taxable value, times 1,000, give us proposed tax rate of $1126, fiscal '19. Turn the page, just gives us our minimum residential factor. All the way to the right, we have residential properties make up 94.3% of the town's property. Commercial is at 5.6%. This next page is basically just a repeat of the page before. But if we flip to the next one, this will give us our CIP, Commercial, Industrial, Personal Property Share against the Real Estate Open Space Share. So if we decide to shift the tax rate 5% to the commercial side, the commercial will see an increase of $282. The residents will only see a savings of $1685. If we go down to all the corresponding columns, we'll come to the end, the maximum we can shift is 150%. The commercial would see an increase of $2,815, and the residents would only see a savings of $168.53. Next up, we're just going to tackle the residential exemption. Our first analysis, we dealt with a 20% residential exemption. It's only adopted in a handful of communities, mostly that have a lot of apartments or seasonal homes. So if we did adopt that, the residential exemption at 20%, the tax rate would have to increase from $1126 to $1348. The break even point is $861,625. That is the, the point where, at that, at that value, the person would not see an increase or decrease in their taxes. We're estimating that 17% of the homes would see an increase in their taxes to no fault of their own, only for the residential exemption. And we believe that most homes in Arlington are owner occupied. Next page, pretty self-explanatory, just lists the tax rates throughout the years. Onto the, what we call the LA4, it lists out parcel count for each class of property, plus their, plus their values for each, each class of property.
I'm going to let you go through the whole and then see.
Okay.
Sorry, I apologize.
So now we come to the LA13, lists out our values, our abatement values, and it calculates our new growth, which is on the second page. Our new growth for the year was $981,206. Next page compares our FY19 values versus the FY18 values. You can see the center column, the increase, the singles, the condos, pretty significant this year. And it's, excuse me, for most classes of property, all the values went up this year, as you can see in the middle column. Next page is just our pie chart to see how the taxes are allocated throughout the various, I'm going to dab our eye, the debt exclusion of property taxes. Next page is just our tax rate components, where they're all come, where all these numbers are coming from for each of the levy base, the 2.5% growth, water and sewer debt, school debt exclusion, and that comes out to our tax rate at $1126. The lower, lower portion, it does at the end, the average assessed single family in Arlington is now $752,184, for an average single, average taxes on a single family are now $8,470. The last page is just a comparison, some neighboring communities. Belmont and Winchester did not have their information yet, so I do not have it, but I will, and when I do, I will post it. And all the way to the right is Lexington. Their average single family is proposed to be $14,876.
Any questions from my colleagues? Mr. Kiro?
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
For the presentation, as, as always. No, I just wanted to point out a couple of things. So this is the lowest that the tax rate has been in 13 years, the tax rate. And it may not feel that way to folks, they see the taxes go up, and it's, again, invoking Mr. Greeley, the millions who are watching at home. Taxes go, go up, but I think it's important that folks realize, especially as we start going into our, our discussions in the coming months around looking at override, general override and debt exclusion to support our schools, that the value of, of folks' properties is going up more radically. Residential values, the total assessed value, went up 14.32% over this last year, and overall, 13.93%. So the stored value that, that residents and businesses in this town have, your investment in this town is, is paying off in spades. That's why you see the, the rate go down, but you're, so I hope that folks will recognize that, that we're, the great benefits of the investments, the location, the quality of life in, in our town, that they, they all contribute to, to that type of a, a growth rate. And I suspect, although maybe someone else will feel differently, that the board will not be inclined to introduce classification of tax rates, a differentiation between residential and, and business tax rates unless folks have had a change of mind compared to other years, because the relative benefit of disproportionately increasing on the businesses, it hits the businesses so much more than any minuscule benefit that, that is seen by residences, just because of our very low tax base. So those are some of the observations that I have. I don't know that I have any real questions. I mean, this is very thorough work, it, it, it comports with, I think, what we've seen in past years, but I think it's just always worth reminding ourselves that, that the investments that we've all made in, in this town are paying off greatly.
Thank you. My question may also partially or totally be answered, not only by the current speaker, but the speaker up next. I know, as of late, over the years, when we come to setting the tax rate, we also talk about the MWRA debt shift, how, how we calculate that, and it could possibly, we could entertain something else. So I'm just going to leave that on the table right now, unless anyone had remarks to that. But Mr. Jameson, did you want to go next?
Your right, please.
Mm-hmm, yes, please.
Gordon Jameson, town meeting member precinct 12, and co-chair of the, in addition- Gordon Jamison, town meeting member, precinct 12, and co-chair of the Division Arlington Fiscal Resource Task Group. I'm sad that I'm the only other person here who's come to listen to the tax rate hearing, as I do many, most years, not all, but most years, because it is one of the most important meetings, hearings that are held in town each year. And I thank the board for going electronic, because in many years past, I've come here and had no access to the material that was being discussed, but now I was able to look at that ahead of time. So as Ms. Mahan mentioned, there are, suggested, there are basically three ways you can jigger the tax rate between the commercial and the residential, and the tax rate in general. There's the debt shift, which the town has chosen to put a portion of our water and sewer charges into the tax rate many years ago. And looking towards the future of when the high school comes on board, I think the board has discussed the potential of removing that to cushion the impact of that debt when it comes onto the tax rate, now still many years off. The other two things that we have discussed always is the factor, which is the way the taxes are divided between residential and commercial properties. And as Mr. Tierney mentioned, that can go from, well, I think the chart he had went to one from zero, from one, which is the way it is now where they're equal, to one and a half, and I would never recommend one and a half. And the other thing that Mr. Tierney also suggested was, there's something that we qualify for in Arlington that isn't discussed as much at these hearings, and that's the residential exemption. So what does, the CIP takes tax dollars out of the residential pool and puts them into the responsibility of the commercial pool, okay? The residential exemption plays only with the residential pool, doesn't have any effect on the commercial rate. What it does is, the first so many thousand of your taxes are exempt if you have an owner occupied premises, residential premises. So I had some questions, and I contacted Mr. Chaplain and Mr. Poole, I believe helped maybe a little bit, and Mr. Tierney and his staff, and they very kindly presented, you may have a sheaf of paper in front of you, they very kindly did some analysis. What I requested was, okay, so if we play with the CIP, that increases the commercial rate, and if we play with the residential, that actually increases the residential rate, but with an exemption, if you have an owner occupied. So my thought was, maybe there was a way where we could come to a meeting of the minds where we could have, and I have a cheat sheet for you. Where the rates were about the same, using both the mechanisms. And so what I've just given the board is something that I obviously just put together, because I just got the Mr. Tierney's readout when I walked in this evening, and again, thanks to him for the work. So at the top of the little table I made up is what happens, the rate is $1,126 and $1,126. That's when there's no CIP and no exemption. If you go down one, that's 5 percent plus 5 percent, and then the CIP goes to $1,182, and the residential is fairly comparable, $1,171. And there'd be a $35,000 exemption, which is $60, okay? But the idea is to have the residential and the commercial rates be as equivalent as possible. Go to the 10 percent CIP and 10 percent exclusion, and Mr. Tierney, if I'm doing this wrong, please correct me. My reading of the numbers is the CIP would be $1,239, and the residential would be $1,227. There'd be a $70,000 exemption on the homeowner, owner-occupied home, and about $120, multiplying those numbers out, of savings. So I think this is something to consider. We have, the board is always cognizant of the needs of seniors and also of young families. And in general, I would think that the young families and the seniors are in the homes that have the lower values, and they would benefit most from this. Obviously, in an exemption situation, those with the higher-based homes would have to bear that differential. So if you have a really expensive home, this would cost you more, but for the lower valued houses, this would provide some modest, but I think that the concept is that, as we move forward through some of these debt exclusions and things, that people want to see that the board and the town are at least trying to mitigate their tax rate. And if you have any questions on that, I'm done.
No, and I agree with you about that conversation, and I just want to let you know and others know, we did have an agenda item further on, talking about a debt exclusion and override, but in light of the current circumstances, I anticipate that will be postponed when we have a full board. And we need to discuss this in the MWRA debt shift, especially in light of a possible impending override and/or debt exclusion. So I want to thank you for doing that, and we definitely will continue on with this conversation.
Right. I wouldn't recommend the debt shift at this time.
Right, right.
Keep that powder dry.
Yes.
This is something that I think, thanks to Mr. Tierney's and his staff, and Mr. Poole, and Adam for facilitating, has been very helpful, and is a way of looking at it where it's not, it's not just all in the commercial, it's on, actually, it's on non-owner-occupied buildings and commercial properties. So that would be commercial on both sides. And it goes back to a statement that members of the board did many years ago, when they said that, well, we don't, they don't recommend doing a factor change until the apartment buildings were considered commercial. Well, that's never going to happen in this state, but this is a way to have, to effectively look at non-owner-occupied residences as commercial properties, and tax the commercial properties in town at a slightly higher rate than we tax resident, occupied buildings. So I think it's worth of more thought.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thanks.
If there's, would you like to, you all said, unless there's any other questions, one of my colleagues prepared to make a motion?
Yes.
Mr. Kuro?
Two motions. My first motion is, I move that the MWRA debt shift be maintained at $5,593,112 on the tax levy as permitted by General Laws, Chapter 110.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Kuro, seconded by Mr. Hurd. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. Mr. Kuro, do you have a second motion? Did you have something? I'm sorry.
Going to ask you guys to sign the early five minutes off.
Okay, okay, sorry. Second motion.
I move to set the tax rate for fiscal year '19 at $1.012 per $1,000 of assessed value, with a residential factor of one, given the hardship the town will face with a two-tier tax rate on the modest number of commercial and/or industrial properties in Arlington.
Sir's second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kuro, seconded by Mr. Hurd. If there's not any further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. Thank you.
Two thoughts. That's an estimated tax rate, as we understand, it still has to be technically approved by DOR. We've never had a problem, but just in case, don't want to mislead anybody. The second thing, I believe the board has to take a vote on the classification, so you would approve a classification of one, right?
Yeah, that was part of the second motion.
Oh, is that in the, oh, I'm sorry.
We included it. We included it, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Do you need that signed tonight before you go?
Please.
Do we want to vote?
Oh, I thought we did. On a motion by Mr. Kuro, seconded by Mr. Hurd, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous vote. Does it matter where I sign? We'll now move on to the consent agenda. I do want to note, agenda item number five has been withdrawn. You're welcome by the, by Mr. Davison. Consent agenda, minutes of meetings, October 22, 2018, for approval, cause an event, 2019 5K race, May 12, 2019. Request, change of hours for all alcohol license, Paramveer Corp., Punjab Find Indian Cuisine at 48547 Mass Ave. A request for change of hours for all alcohol restaurant, the WC STT Corp., Town Tavern, 193201 Mass Ave. A request for contractor drain layer license, Asphalt Services, Inc., 210 New Boston Street, Woburn, Mass. Request, again, contract drain layers license, KB Aruda Construction, Inc., PO Box 390822, Cambridge, Mass. A request, special one-day beer and wine license, December 29, at Town Hall for a private event. Again, is there anyone here for the consent agenda? If not, move approval by...
Move approval, subject to conditions as set forth.
Mr. Kuro, seconded by Mr. Hurd. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. We now come to appointments, and there are two terms, to the Arlington Tree Committee, terms to expire December 31, 2021. Keith Schneble and Philip Tedesco. If you could, you gentlemen could come to the microphone, again, pronounce your name correctly, because I probably did not, and just give some remarks to the boards about, hopefully, your contributions to the Arlington Tree Committee.
So I think you did well with my names. Keith Schneble, 78 Webb Cowat Road, and you're looking for me to speak a little bit about my...
Yes, because we have the material you sent us, but other people that may be sitting at home, if you could give them sort of a synopsis.
Yeah, so it's almost like a family thing, but I think, so I got interested in becoming part of the Tree Committee following the 40 Webb Cowat Tree Hearing, which you may remember from last September. And I sat in this room thinking about how important it is to me to have a town that cares about the quality of life in terms of the environment, and I think that our town does. And that night, in that meeting, I thought that you all showed, and I realized that the town really does care about that kind of thing, and I decided to learn more about it. Went to the Tree Committee meeting the following week, and I've been to quite a few of them since. And it took me a long time. I had on my list, I should apply, I should try and actually get on that committee. I want to do the work that helps bring this town to a better environmental quality. So, and it's something that's been important to me my whole, my whole life. So, and I think that goes back to my mother and just things that she taught me when I was young, too. So I actually sat in this room thinking, I've got to stand up and say something in that meeting last September, just for my mom.
Well, thank you.
Yeah. So, anyway, so I've been to many of those meetings, and I think that that committee is very committed, too. I think that working with those people, everything that they stand for and the effort that they put in is something that I want to be a part of.
This is the best way for you to come to us, because you got involved in the process, and we're thrilled that you're staying committed to it and joining on to it. So, thank you so much.
Okay.
Again, say your name correctly, if I didn't.
Sure. My name's Philip Tedesco, 74 Park Street. I wanted to get involved in the Tree Committee, just because we have a family of four kids, and we've just really enjoyed, and I think having the kids and spending a lot of time at all of Arlington's parks and biking around, and have just realized how much we really appreciate all the trees that are here, and how much, you know, I'd like to be able to contribute to, you know, improving the tree canopy and making it, you know, a better town from that perspective for us and other families, you know, in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Kuro?
I'd like to move approval.
Second.
Both appointments, moved by Mr. Kuro, seconded by Mr. Hurd. Any further discussion or questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
We'll see you all in the future. Is there anyone here for Citizens Open Forum? No. What agenda item are you here for?
The next one.
Oh, it is the next one. Okay, I was going to say I take it out of order. Not seeing anyone here for Citizens Open Forum, we'll go to agenda item 13, request to memorialize Patricia C. Fitzmorris. Come to the microphone and identify yourself, please.
My name is Dorrit Webkow, 37 Nealian Way, Bedford, Mass. I'm the president of the Schwammill Preservation Trust, which is the nonprofit organization that owns and runs the old Schwammill in Arlington. We're coming with a request to name the parkland that's right in front of the mill, a small green space, in honor of Patricia Fitzmorris. The request actually is to name the park Mill Pond Park and dedicate it to Patricia C. Fitzmorris for her actions in saving the mill in 1969. We make that particular request after coordinating and discussing the matter with her children. And the proposal that I believe you all have, along with two supporting letters, one from Marjorie Cohen, one from David Baldwin, both of Arlington, states about nine reasons why we think this is appropriate. First of all, she spent her entire life, Mrs. Fitzmorris, working to improve the cultural life and the actual appearance of Arlington, as a member of the garden club for many years, and most famously, for her actions in 1969 to save the Schwammill from simply moving on to another business or industrial purpose, possibly to be destroyed, and instead to preserve it as a living history museum. And that included actions to organize a trust, to publicize awareness of the place, to raise money, and eventually to affect the transfer from the Larson Company to the trust, which continues to own the mill today. She then spent 30 years of her life making the mill not just a preserved historical relic, but a place that would be a center of cultural activity in Arlington, initially making it a home to artists and artisans, offering classes for adults and younger people in Arlington in those crafts. And in later years, making it home to two businesses, which continue to operate there, Masterworks Conservation and the Shaker Workshops. She worked, and perhaps this is particularly relevant, in the 1980s and 90s to help the developers who had determined to build the condos at Watermill Place, to do so in a way which would promote green space, would not impinge on the mill, of course, would daylight the brook. And in the course of all those activities, which included many hearings in town, the decision to make that little space a kind of park belonging to Arlington was affected, I believe. The Schwamills had traditionally owned that little bit of parkland, and it was where their mill pond was when they first bought that building in the 1860s, so Mill Pond Park is an appropriate name. And her daughter, Christie, who worked at the mill for many years as well, thought that her mother would much prefer that the park's name tie it to the mill, as opposed to something like Patricia Fitzmorris Park. So the dedication would be, in addition to the name, and the family is aware, as is the mill, that any kind of memorial marker or anything would be at the expense of those two people, or the mill and the family, and any other donors who were interested. I can't think of anything else particularly to add beyond the proposal. One of the last things she did was to create the historical panels, which are lined the bikeway, and they're now in a kind of a bit of a sorry state in some places, but those historical panels along the bikeway, one of which is for the mill, but there are other ones, too, which inform people of different historical aspects of things that were along the bikeway, what was once the railroad. So that she was working on those kinds of things right up until the last year of her life. And so we'd like to honor her in this way. It'd be good if it's in the coming year, because it will be the mill's 50th anniversary as a museum, starting in about July, when it went out of business, and Patricia swung into action, so.
Well, I want to thank you for doing this. Mrs. Fitzmorris and her family were great contributors to sort of the facet of Arlington and what it looks like. I just want to check with the town manager concerning all my colleagues, this piece of property that we would refer this to the Public Memorials Committee, unless... this to the Public Memorials Committee, unless...
I think we're required to by bylaw.
Yeah.
If we could just approve it, I would, but I think we have to.
But I think we have to, so.
We have to.
Would that be a motion, Mr. Carroll?
Yes, I move to refer the request to the, what's it called?
Public memorials?
Public memorials, with a request that they evaluate and return to us a recommendation for the request.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hurd, and we'll forward all the information that you provided us, which is very extensive, and I really think outlines it. The only thing that I don't recall seeing in there, and if it isn't, if we could just relay this to the Public's Memorial Committee, as well as yourself, when you meet or converse with them, that we sort of have a target date of, you know, June 2019. Okay.
I will just say, again, if we could do it, I would do it, right now, because I think it's very fitting.
Yeah, we're very familiar with the procedure, and we've just been getting the letters in line and confering with their family to find out exactly what they think would be most appropriate, that's all.
Fantastic. Thank you, and the other people you cited for getting this process started, that's long overdue, and hopefully we live up to the expectations that Patricia and others deserved. On a motion by Mr. Carroll, seconded by Mr. Hurd, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous vote. And Marie will get in touch with you. Agenda Item 14, Attorney Heim, for her approval, acceptance of Hardy School PTO donation for Playground Project, PP.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be very brief. The Hardy School PTO raised $13,000 for the Lake Street Playground. A vote of the select board is necessary to accept the gift and place it into appropriate account. So if the board is so inclined, the motion would be, we hereby accept the gift of the Hardy School Parent Teacher Organization for the benefit of the Lake Street Playground, and direct it to be placed in appropriate account.
I move to approve, to accept the Hardy School PTO donation for the Lake Street Playground Project, with our thanks.
Seconded by Mr. Hurd. Any further questions? If not, on a motion by Mr. Carroll, seconded by Mr. Hurd, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. Agenda Item 15, is there a motion for one of my colleagues, Mr. Carroll?
Yeah, I move to table this item until our January 7 meeting.
Motion by Mr. Carroll, seconded by Mr. Hurd. Any further questions or discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. Again, Agenda Item 16, I do have something from our chairman, Mr. Dunn, that he asked me to read regarding this agenda item to put forth as a possible process. Of course, if myself or any of my colleagues have another process that they'd like to suggest, feel free to do so. This is regarding the process to fill the vacancy on the select board. Mr. Dunn says, "Dear colleagues, I'm sorry I can't be at the meeting tonight to speak to this issue in person. As you all know, last year we filled a vacancy on the board. When we started the process, we had some qualities we were looking for in the appointee. We were looking for someone who could hit the ground running and help us with warrant article hearings. We also wanted someone who wouldn't run for the full term in April. We didn't want to put our finger on that scale. A number of well-qualified Arlingtonians stepped forward to fill the seat. We had the important but unpleasant task of saying no far more than we said yes. I know that many of the participants in the end found it to be uncomfortable. This year, the circumstances are different, and we don't have the advance warning that we did last year. I, Mr. Dunn, believe that if we ran that same process, we'd end up with the same nominee. I don't think we should repeat the process. At our next meeting, the chairman would like us to appoint, and puts forward as a suggestion, Clarissa Rowe to the empty seat. She has agreed to serve. If my colleagues and the town manager agree, I will also seek to reappoint her to the Community Preservation Committee in April. It is only with regret that I asked her to leave that committee, and I'd like to get her back on it as fast as possible. Sincerely, Chairman Dan Dunn." So, Mr. Dunn, and there's really, I guess, nothing to vote on tonight, but has stated a process of what he would like to have happen at our next meeting on December 17. After this meeting is over, the chairman and/or Mrs. Kropelka will contact the fifth voting member, Mr. Leoni, the town moderator. But the chairman wanted to see if there were any other processes from our colleagues that they would like to add to the mix, or if this is something we're amenable to.
Yeah, I tend to agree with, after watching it, not from the board, but as a spectator last year, I think the process was a little difficult on the people that went through it. And, you know, Clarissa has always been a great member of the board, and, you know, it came down to Clarissa last year, and I think she'd be a great person to fill the gap, so.
Mr. Carroll?
Yeah, my feeling is, we did this less than a year ago, so we've already gone through this process once. In this letter, the chair seems to answer two questions that would have come to my mind. I mean, one is whether or not Ms. Rowe wishes to come back to the board would be mine, because I certainly haven't spoken with her about it, and it appears that he has, so that answers that question. And just the reminder that, because of our bylaws, she would have to step down from the Community Preservation Committee again, but apparently, it appears from here, that he's also discussed that with her. So I think that it's a wise course of action. It was a very uncomfortable process, and given that we just did this less than a year ago, strikes me, it makes sense to do that, assuming we have the votes. I mean, we just still have to vote for on it, and Mr. Leoni will have to join us in this, so. So the council has something to kick in.
Attorney Heim?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to add that the board only has 30 days under the Town Manager Act, which is part of what's so difficult about having a more elaborate process, given the unexpected nature of the vacancy.
Yeah, Christmas Eve. We need to have this done by Christmas Eve.
Exactly. And I do know, spoke as recently as this afternoon with Ms. Rowe, just to, so she's definitely been following along to hit the ground running, not that she needs to talk to me to be able to do that. So that will be on our next agenda of December 17, 2018. There's no vote necessary right now, and I'll leave it to the chairman and the board administrator, notify the town moderator. And then discussion, future select board meetings, Mr. Carroll, do you have a motion?
Yeah, I move, I don't know if we should table this to the next meeting, or the...
January 7.
Go to January 7, once we have a full board. Okay, I move to table this item until January 7.
Motion by Mr. Carroll, seconded by Mr. Hurd. And then we'll have a full board and back in the swing of business. No further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. We have two items under correspondence received from Rob Davison of Tanniger Street regarding the Arlington High School Building Project, as well as correspondence from our town manager. Do I have a motion to receive?
Receive.
By Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mr. Carroll. Any comments, Mr. Chaplain, town manager?
Just for the board's information, Mr. Davison of Tanniger Street wrote to me as well about the project, and I've had a dialogue back and forth with him. So he's been engaged from the town's point of view, and I wasn't exactly clear on what his final opinion was on the course of the project, but he seemed very satisfied with the response that he received from my office.
Okay. Were you here for an agenda item? Okay, I want to make sure I didn't skip you, I apologize. Okay, if there's no other further actions or discussion, on a motion by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mr. Carroll, move receipt, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. We now come to new business, Mrs. Kropelka.
I think, Attorney, what?
New business, Attorney Heim?
No, Madam Chair.
Mr. Chaplain, town manager?
I have no new business.
Mr. Hurd?
The one thing that I'd like to announce, which I think is fine at this point, right, is, over the past years, it may be the company I keep, I guess, but the one thing that I've had a lot of members of the town talk to me about was, everyone wants an outdoor rink, outdoor ice skating rink, because a lot of the surrounding cities and towns have done it. So me and a group of people recently met with town manager and John Marshall, and I'd like to thank them. They were very supportive from the beginning of the process. We now have secured a rink. It's in, not assembled yet, and it looks like we're going to put it on the field of Poet's Corner. So, not 100%, but I think we're just about getting close to it right now. So it's exciting. As the weather gets colder, we're going to try to get that in quickly. We have, I'd invite all of the town, because we have a maintenance committee, so the one thing that the volunteers have been asked to take care of is the maintenance. So we're going to start doling out nights for people to go down and shovel it off, and work with some other town departments.
That's right in your neighborhood, right?
It is right in my neighborhood, so. I get to go down and check to make sure that the people that are supposed to be there are actually shoveling it off. But, so it's exciting, you know, a lot of people I've talked to have been excited about it, and I'll be there almost nightly, getting my boys out there, getting going, so. So it's exciting for me to announce that, and stay tuned for an opening date. We'll do some sort of event on the first night, then it freezes, we'll watch the weather.
I think that's fantastic. For years, my family and my kids, especially my youngest, Cindy, who you all know, we went to the very well-kept and state-of-the-art Kelly Kelly and Danny Kelly rink in their backyard. And I remember being out there with a DeWatt radio, a nice little thing to keep us warm, and the kids going around. He even had referees out there, which his was by no means probably the scope you're going to do, but I do know how much fun that's going to be, so.
My brain's already spitballing, trying, maybe a little hockey tournament, three-on-three tournament at some point, maybe a Winter Wonderland theme, so, we'll see.
Icecapades.
Icecapades, yeah.
We were out there the year that the Patriots had the snowball game, and they were throwing, I could see the TV, all the other moms and people were in the house. I was outside with the kids and the gentleman and the referee, and we did the same thing through the snow op. It was one of the best nights I ever had in my life. New business, Mr. Carroll?
I can't match that. I have no business.
I also have no business, so our next meeting is December 17, 2018. Am I correct, Mrs. Kropelka? We have a different start time of...
6 o'clock.
6 o'clock PM here sharply. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn by Mr. Carroll, seconded by Mr. Hurd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. Thank you. Good night, Arlington.